Order. Misty, would you call the roll, please?
Hal Glanville. JR Huddleston.
Here.
Deborah Johnston.
Here.
Bill Lukens.
Here.
Melissa Niles.
Here.
Travis Orbach.
Here.
Larry Pratt.
Here.
Linda Varval.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And our typical meeting reminder, if you have a conflict of interest, council, please let address the council know before you vote. I'd like to make a motion to approve an amended agenda. And it's to add an executive session for legal after finance officer report. So it would be two executive sessions tonight, the one right before personnel, and then an executive session at the end of the meeting after the finance officer report.
Make a motion to approve an amended agenda adding executive session after finance officer report in accordance with SDCL 125-23 legal.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the February 20th council meeting?
I make a motion to approve the minutes from the February 20th council meeting. Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Can I get a motion to approve the bills in between?
I'll make a motion to approve the bills in between for $243,566.13.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. And a motion to approve the current claims.
I make a motion to approve the current claims of $101,740.76.
Second.
Listen. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. A motion to approve the Wells Fargo credit card claims.
Make a motion to approve Wells Fargo credit card claims for $8,134.70.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion passes. Do either of our public members have anything they'd like to address the council with tonight? And a reminder, Gerald, five minutes if you could.
Yes.
Thank you.
Just have a quick question. Gerald Colligan, member of the Scout Center Board, just wondering what the status is of the hazardous fuels reduction program that the city was going to enter into.
Yeah.
We've got a board meeting coming up.
Okay. So in asking the question, am I accurate then that you haven't had a chance to talk with the city administrator on that yet?
I have not been able to chase him down.
All right.
I'm also assuming he's got the paperwork for the information for the bid packages and that information or?
The bid packages, the bid packages for what?
I guess the state will pay 80% of the lowest bid, but there's got to be at least three bids.
Okay. I can't speak for him, I don't know whether he has those or not, Gerald.
Okay, so I'll chase him down then and get the paperwork to him.
Yeah, he was out today. For those folks that don't know, right now he is commuting from Deadwood, and he's trying very hard to find a home much, much closer than that, so he was house hunting today. Stop in tomorrow and see if you can connect with him.
Okay, I'll get the paperwork to him.
All right.
Thank you.
Does our remaining public member have anything they'd like to share? All right. Thank you. Council updates, Tracy had mentioned he's going to be a little late, so we'll work him into the schedule when he gets here. So that takes us to our first executive session. Can I get a motion to go into executive session for personnel?
I make a motion, we adjourn to executive session in accordance with South Dakota codified law 1-25-21, personnel.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. I'm hopeful that this won't be real long for the public, but we'll get back to you as soon as we can. You're on the time here a little bit, Misty, but it looks like we were reconvening around 7:40. So we had talked about council updates, that Tracy would be joining us a little later. I see that he's out in the audience now. So Tracy, if you'd like to come up and give us your council update, please?
Okay, well, good evening. We're on the cusp of spring, hopefully, and more and more activity going on with the project today. I noticed they're doing a lot of, a lot more pouring of concrete, so our Sixth Street area down here is really starting to take shape, and so it's nice to see that. Looks like probably within the next, I would say probably in the next week or two, the Freedom Trail will be fully reopened. They'll have this east part done, although there is a retaining wall they have to put in along there, and retaining walls do take a little bit more time, so. But they are moving forward on it, they were working on that, doing some of the forming today, and I see that they have it blanketed, you know, to keep the ground warm, so I would assume they'll probably be doing some pouring on that the next day or two. On North River Street, further north, the intersection of National Avenue, Minnetka and North River, that's been an area with a lot of work that has had to be done. At this point, the utility work, well, I thought it was almost done, but I noticed they were laying some conduit today, so that's some of the last things required, so there was some conduit being put in. They, of course, as you've noticed, they milled a part of the street on the northbound lane and actually have overexcavated that in the last day, down about two or three feet. Now, there will be utilities going in there, both water main and sewer main replacements, so we'll be back very active with the utility replacement now, going really on through the rest of the project. The suspended sidewalk, we're waiting, hoping. We have had some positive signs that a number of the towers have been completed, so hopefully we'll see those any time, but can't make a promise of what day that's going to be. But we're closer, definitely closer. So as far as the highway project, the utility project, that's, yeah, and of course, as you've noticed, they're working on some pieces of the puzzle that still need to be, you know, sidewalks, approaches, pedestrian ramps, those types of things. And of course, they have a number of the corners to do, actually quite a few of those yet to do, so you will be seeing work throughout the part of the project that already has, you know, the road itself pretty much completed, but you will be seeing those pedestrian areas and corners being built. And then in other projects, we have the golf course retaining wall, or golf course clubhouse retaining wall, and that has been going quite well now. They've got at least two of the courses of the big block placed on quite a bit of it, so it's definitely going to have a very solid, long-lasting look, I think. I think we're going to be very happy with the result of that. It's going to be very substantial, work is being done very well, so I'm impressed with what I see so far on that. And I guess the other ongoing project, the new hangar at the airport is almost finished. It's more detail work now, electrical work, some changing of pedestrian doors, and then landscape work around the buildings is pretty much what remains to be done, as well as the approaches to the doors, but that's pretty much the update of projects, so any questions? No questions?
Doesn't look like there's any.
Okay.
Thank you for your council update.
All right, well, you're welcome.
Thanks, Tracy.
Hopefully, a month from now, I'll be able to say, well, you'll be able to see towers going up down on North River Street. We're really hoping and anxious for that, so, okay, thank you.
Tracy?
Yeah.
Our first new business item is a change order with complete concrete.
Oh, yeah.
So if you could, you know, hang on till we get to that, if council has any questions, you know, explain what's going on there.
Okay. Thanks.
All right. Next on our list is personnel. I'd like to break this up into two separate motions, though if I could get a motion to approve Personnel Actions B through H.
I would like to make a motion to approve Personnel Actions B through H.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. All right, we'll jump back up to, can I get a motion for Personnel Action A?
Make a motion to approve Personnel Action A.
Second.
Discussion? Chief Darden, are you still with us? Is there anything you'd like to share with the council on this particular hire?
It was only a matter of time before the sheriff's office and the police department...
A little closer. Karaoke night.
Just folded up.
I said it was only a matter of time before we, you know, our two teams fought against each other. Gap Brandon, he applied for the police department from the sheriff's office. He had actually applied for our agency back in November, maybe it was October or November '23, we didn't have any openings at the time, so we had a application on file for him, and yeah, he reached out, asked for the particulars about the job and rate of pay and everything like that, and some backdrop on him, he came from Martin, he was the chief of police in Martin for six years. Prior to that, he was a city officer there for a few years, so he brings a ton of experience, both in the investigatory position and the administrative position. He's really squared away, and we're really, really excited to get him on our team. That, again, puts us full staff, eight officers, eight fully certified, nobody to go to LET, nothing like that, so everybody's on the road working. And it's, kudos to you guys as well, I'll just make that little notation, you know, I asked for a sixth step for him based on his experience, and that was a significant step up from where he was at, and ultimately, you know, it's not always about that, but it definitely helped get him over to our agency.
Chief, I think you alluded to it, but is it safe to say that this was an unsolicited application?
Yes.
This was not a poaching?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
You said he was the chief of police in Martin before.
Yep.
He's the same guy that spoke the other night at the meeting for the new Justice Center?
Yep.
Okay.
Any other questions? I do want to be redundant and ask the same question that Bill asked, because I understand the sensitivities that we did not recruit this individual.
No, sir.
Council's had a discussion with the county commissioners about, you know, what we offer versus what everybody else offers, and it's, it can be difficult to keep our staff and for them to keep their staff if we, you know, start competing with each other. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks so much.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Onto new business, new business item A. Can I get a motion to approve change order number seven with complete concrete?
Make a motion to approve change order number seven with complete concrete, Inc., project number 2021-001, PCN X05P, to cover five different additional work items, making necessary alterations to accommodate old and unusual sewer connections, and to install a stubout from new stormwater sewer box at the intersection of Albany Avenue and South Chicago Street, so the city can, in the future, connect to it when completing future work in the north-south alley behind Ace Hardware. Change order increases the contract price by $12,452.22 to a new total contract price
Second. I got a smile on our finance officer. Discussion? I would just like to mention, council, if you remember, we have had a discussion in the past about these types of actions and how they relate to change orders. Recognizing that it's sometimes necessary on the spot to be able to make these decisions for the work to continue and not be delayed, and the council was comfortable in giving that authority to our city engineer to assess, you know, whether it's appropriate to do that, and then let us know about these after the fact, rather than bringing each change order, or stopping the work that would require a change order until we can get it in front of council. So that's why you see a group of these here, that these are all related to the project that we had previously given Tracy the authority to make a judgment call on. Based on his description of the work, do you have any questions for him? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Thank you, Tracy, for hanging on. Onto new business, item B. Can I get a motion to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the professional services agreement with KLJ Engineering?
I make a motion to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the professional service agreement with KLJ Engineering LLC for the design and construction administration related to the reconstruction of three historic staircases in the city identified as stairs adjacent to the Hot Springs Volunteer Power Department, stairs adjacent to 501 Hammond Avenue, and stairs adjacent to 702 Jennings Avenue, at a total cost of $90,000, to be funded by future supplemental appropriation to additional sales, tax, fund, services, and fees 212-21200-42200.
Second. Did you say a total cost of $90,000, Larry?
That's what I said.
Just want to make sure.
Yes, sir.
Discussion?
I have a question about the timelines within what I was reading. They really don't give us times for procuring grants for this work, to be, go forward with this, like it kind of says we're automatically going to do.
Yeah. So if you remember, council approved going out for solicitations for the design work of these three sets of stairs. We had two companies, two engineering firms that responded, KLJ, they're the firm that does our airport engineering force, and then ISG, the folks that designed the sidewalk for us. KLJ was the low bid at $90,000, ISG's bid was $105,000. So directly to your, well, the reason that we went out with bids, we don't have, we don't have the staff in-house to do this kind of work, but also, I believe, am I correct, that it's DOT's?
Two of the three grants that we've been shared that potentially could help us with this required.
Yeah, required us go for an engineering group on their list, so that's what we're doing with this.
Yes, and this doesn't obligate us to construct the sidewalks, you know, they'll go out and get the bids, and if, so that's a discussion for down the road, this doesn't obligate us to any expenditures.
We're going to apply for the grants as soon as we get this done.
Okay.
Construction-ready.
Construction-ready design, and it would also be construction administration, once the city has the kind of, you know, if we can get the funding, for them to go ahead and do the administrative, contract administration for the sidewalks. But yes, this is strictly for design and contract administration.
And it's a requirement so that we can be eligible for the grants through the DOT and the trails.
Recreational.
Recreational trails. We had to have this step done.
Does that answer your question, Luke?
Hopefully, he bids on the stair jobs.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business, item C. Can I get a motion to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the acceptance of the proposal from American Engineering Testing?
I make a motion to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the acceptance of the proposal from American Engineering Testing, testing, to perform the required geotechnical exploration of the proposed staircase three reconstruction projects at a lump sum cost of $6,950, to be funded by future supplemental appropriation to additional sales, tax, fund, services, and services and fees 212-21200-42200. Second.
If you remember, going back and reading the two proposals, each of them talked about the geotechnical services, and this is them coming in to do boring samples of the soils at each of the three stair locations, so that they know what they're dealing with, and they can design good foundations for them that are going to last. That's what this is about. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Onto new business, item D. Can I get a motion to approve and authorize the city administrator, Bob Nelson Jr., to sign the outside of Deadwood grant agreement?
Make a motion to approve and authorize city administrator, Bob Nelson Jr., to sign the outside of Deadwood grant agreement from the Deadwood Historic Preservation Commission for $7,500 for the dehumidification system for City Hall project.
Second. Discussion? So what is a dehumidification project for City Hall? A lot of these old stone buildings have moisture in them, and that moisture is starting to eat away at the sandstone. We had some folks come in and take a look at the basement at City Hall, and we can see the damage that's happening. Each day that our new city administrator's with us, I really appreciate the 12 to 13 years of previous municipal experience he's bringing with us, especially from Deadwood. He's already got this grant for $7,500, and he's applied for another one to fill the remaining amount for the equipment. I don't have the amount of that equipment in front of you, or in front of me, but he is going after the additional amount to get that taken care of. This is to stop the deterioration of the foundation at City Hall.
It's about 15,070 more, and he hopes to get a grant for the other half as well.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Now, don't jump all over each other to get this next one. New business, item E. Can I get a motion to approve and authorize public works engineer Tracy Bastian to sign the perpetual easement prepared by Heberly and Associates?
I make a motion to approve and authorize public works engineer Tracy Bastian to sign the perpetual easement prepared by Heberly and Associates on behalf of Golden West Telecommunications to conduct, construct, reconstruct, operate, maintains, and removal such underground telecommunications facilities as required upon, over, under, and across the following described land. Track A of Southeast 1/4, Southeast 1/4 of Section 3 Township 8S, Range 6E of the BHM Fall River County, South Dakota. Beginning at the northwest corner of Track A as previously described, thence southerly 438 feet, more or less, thence easterly 346 feet, more or less, to a point of beginning. Thence, an easement of 16.5 feet, one rod, in width commencing at said point of beginning. Thence, southeasterly 208 feet, more or less, to a point of ending, and a 22.9 acre tract of land located in the Southeast 1/4 Northwest 1/4, Northeast 1/4 Southwest 1/4 of Section 10 Township 5, Range 6 East of the BHM Fall River County, South Dakota. Beginning at the southwest corner of a 22.9 acre tract of land as previously described, thence northerly 26 feet, more or less, to a point of beginning. Thence, an easement 16.5 feet, one rod, in width, commencing at said point of beginning. Thence, northeasterly 380 feet, more or less, to a point of ending, and tracks A and B of Angostura Farm Unit Number 2, less slot 1 of Track A, less part of B platted into Simon's Tract, .05 acres, less lots H-3.04 acres, H-3 2.28 acres, and H4 1.58 acres of Sections 9 and 10 Township 8 South, Range 6 East of the BHM Fall River County, South Dakota. Beginning at the northwest corners of Track A and B as prescribed, previously described, thence... thence southeasterly five hundred and eighty-eight feet, more or less, thence southerly one thousand eighteen feet, more or less, to a point of beginning. Thence an easement sixteen point five feet, one rod, in width, commencing at said point of beginning. Thence northeasterly four hundred and fifty-eight feet, more or less, to a point of ending, and beginning at the southwest corner of east one slash two, southwest one slash four as previously described, thence northerly forty-four feet, more or less, to a point of beginning. Thence an easement sixteen point five feet, one rod, in width commencing at said point of beginning. Thence easterly two thousand eight hundred and eight feet, more or less, to a point, henceforth known as point A. Thence easterly ninety, hundred seventy feet, more or less, to a point of ending. Thence returning to point A, thence northeasterly one thousand two hundred and eighty-four feet, more or less, to a point of ending, and west one slash two, southwest one slash four, southwest one slash four, northwest one slash four of section eleven Township eight, eight south, range six east of B H M Fall River County, South Dakota. Beginning at the northwest corner of west one slash two, southwest one slash four as previously described, thence northerly nine feet, ninety feet, more or less, to a point of beginning. Thence an easement sixteen point five feet, one rod, in width commencing at said point of beginning. Thence easterly one thousand three hundred and twenty-eight feet, more or less, to a point of ending, and beginning at the southwest corner of west one slash two, southwest one slash four as prescribed, previously described, thence northerly eight hundred and seventy feet, more or less, to a point of beginning. Thence an easement sixteen point five feet, one rod, in width, commencing at said point of beginning. Thence northeasterly two thousand one hundred and thirty-eight feet, more or less, to a point of ending.
Second.
Second.
Got that?
Everybody?
Yeah, I think everybody did.
Well done, thank you.
Thank you. I'm not sure who I should put for a second because I heard, um...
JR jumped out.
So, looking at the, uh, the diagram that all of this describes, uh, this is, um, out by the airport, crossing the city property. The diagram makes it look very simple.
Lot simpler than what you just read.
Right.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Yeah.
The motion passes. Uh, and our second, uh, large new business, item F. Can I get a motion to approve and authorize public works engineer Tracy Bastian to sign the perpetual easement prepared by Heberly and Associates on behalf of Golden West Telecommunications?
Make a motion to approve and authorize public works engineer Tracy Bastian to sign the perpetual easement prepared by Heberly and Associates on behalf of Golden West Telecommunications to construct, reconstruct, operate, maintain, and remove such underground telecommunications facilities as required upon over and under across the following described land. Northeast one quarter, southeast one quarter, northwest one quarter, southeast one quarter, north half S one, half S E one quarter, less track one, less track two, less track H S W C one, less track H S W C two, less track A, section ten Township seven S, range five E of the B H M Fall River County, South Dakota, beginning at the northwest corner of northeast one quarter, southwest one quarter as previously described, thence easterly five hundred and seventy feet, more or less, to a point of beginning. Thence an easement sixteen point five feet, one rod, in width, commencing at said point of beginning. Thence southerly one hundred and ten feet, more or less, thence southwesterly three hundred and sixty-four feet, more or less, thence southeasterly one thousand five hundred and eighty feet, more or less, thence southwesterly two hundred and fifty-six feet, more or less, to a point of ending, and beginning at the southwest corner, north one-half S, one-half southeast one quarter as previously described, thence easterly six hundred and seventy-four feet, more or less, thence northerly two hundred and ninety-two feet, more or less, to a point of beginning. Thence an easement sixteen point five feet, one rod, in width, commencing at said point of beginning. Thence northwestly two hundred and seventy feet, more or less, to a point of ending.
Second.
Did you pick one of them?
I did, thank you.
Well done, thank you. Uh, so the previous one, uh, was city property, it's going to the north of the airport. Uh, this one is along the entrance road to the airport itself. So that's the second diagram for your consideration. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, on to new business, item G. Can I get a motion to recognize and record the names of three suppliers and their quotes received for the purchase of four thousand gallons of one hundred, uh, low lead aviation gasoline?
Make a motion to recognize and record the names of the three suppliers and their quotes received for the purchase of four thousand gallons of one hundred low-lead aviation gasoline by the Hot Springs Airport as required by S D C L five dash eighteen C dash six. Purchase was made with World Fuel Accent Aviation Group at four dollars and thirty-four cents per gallon. Other vendors considered were City Service Valcon at four seventy-seven and Volan Oil Midway Service at four dollars and eighty-one cents.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Uh, I would like to correct what I had previously said as far as the two easements.
Thank you.
Uh, the first one was for the two easements from Golden West out at the city property, north and south. The second one was actually, uh, an easement for, uh, property out on, uh, Hawk Brook.
Oh, yes.
I'd like to stand corrected on that. All right, new business, item H. Uh, a motion to appoint council member Deborah Johnston to represent the city.
I make a motion to appoint council member Deborah Johnston to represent the city during the twenty-twenty-four Consolidated Board of Equalization meeting.
Second.
You're, you're completely on board with this?
I've been doing it, it's kind of a thankless, can't-do-anything job, it's pretty, especially with them not doing anything in the legislature this year, but I'll do it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
When is that meeting?
They schedule it and it hasn't been scheduled yet, it'll be in March.
March?
Or is it early April, late March or early April?
I was going to say, I'm going to be gone the last week of March, so...
The Fall River County Auditor will schedule it, she'll reach out to us when they have a date scheduled, and I'll confirm with Deb if we need somebody to step in, are you interested?
Yeah, would you, do you have somebody you'd like to nominate to step in for it?
On a weekday to work on our list.
During the weekday, usually.
Is, is it a weekday?
It usually is, yes.
Yeah, it's usually a weekday.
I'll volunteer to step in for you if you can't make it.
I appreciate that, I'll be gone from the twenty-fourth to the twenty-eighth.
Of March, right.
Of March, yeah.
So if you can't make it, I'm your man.
I appreciate that.
And if you can't make it, how about Linda?
Linda, I think we'll be all right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. New business, item I. Can I get a motion to approve renewal of the Southern Hills Golf Course Toro N S N?
Make a motion to approve the renewal of the Southern Hills Golf Course Toro N S N Irrigation Controller Support Network Essentials, twenty-four month service agreement and extended warranty.
Second.
Discussion? I don't know what the N S N acronym stands for, but this is the contract, uh, that Jason gets every year, uh, for his irrigation system. National Support Network. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business, item J. A motion to approve an automatic budget supplement of four thousand four hundred and eighty-three dollars and seventy cents.
Make a motion to approve an automa, automatic budget supplement of four thousand four hundred and eighty-three dollars, seventy cents to the General Fund Police Department vehicle repairs one oh one dash four two one zero zero dash four two five one zero. Expense budget for repairs to the PD vehicle, twenty-nineteen Dodge Durango, number eighteen ninety-eight, damaged on one nineteen twenty-four. Revenue received from South Dakota P A A, insurance claim, G C two zero two four one one seven nine one two, less one thousand dollar deductible.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. And our last new business, item K. A motion to acknowledge the notification of raffle from the Mammoth Site.
I make a motion to acknowledge not, notification of raffle from the Mammoth Site to raise funds for education and research at the site in support of their annual fundraising efforts. A fifty-fifty drawing will be held Monday, September second, twenty-twenty-four.
Second.
Discussion? Misty, I don't have a clear recollection, is this something the council has to vote on or is this like a discussion item?
We're just acknowledging it.
You're simply acknowledging it.
Correct.
All right.
Why do we need to acknowledge them?
Statute.
Oh, because it was like a gambling thing or something?
Probably.
Okay, so we don't need a vote? Or we do?
Uh, you can, you did unacknowledging the fuel, which is the same thing, you're just acknowledging it.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. So that brings us to our committee reports. Uh, city administrator, finance officer, uh, our city administrator is trying to find a home so he doesn't have to commute anymore from Deadwood. Uh, I talked with Misty earlier about the finance officer report. Uh, with your agreement, uh, I would ask that we, uh, waive the committee reports, city administrator report, finance officer report. Uh, we have another executive session for legal, I'm not sure how long that one's going to take, uh, so I'd like to give us as much time as possible, uh, but I do have a short report that I would like to give, so if you're okay with, uh, foregoing our committee reports, uh, city administrator and finance officer report till the next meeting, uh, I'll go ahead and, uh, give my, uh, my report. I want to update the council on the recent burn of the brush pile at the landfill. I told you at our last meeting we wouldn't burn the brush pile this year. The week we intended to burn, the pile didn't work out because of unfavorable wind conditions. At that time, we thought we had lost the opportunity to burn this year, uh, yet this year because Fall River, Fall River Health System was scheduled to replace the intake air filters for their medical, uh, H V A C systems the following week. The next week, weather conditions improved, so we could burn the brush pile. Uh, Fall River Health System was contacted, uh, about the situation and agreed to burn the brush pile. The pile was set on fire at twelve A M on Wednesday, February twenty-eighth. By eight A M Wednesday morning, the majority of the pile was reduced to smoldering ashes, and the city employees continued to monitor the pile throughout the week. On Friday, March first, city employees spent about five hours spraying the smoldering ashes with water, and on Sunday, March third, they finished watering the pile to extinguish, extinguish any remaining embers. I want to personally thank Billy Morrow, Kurt Seacrest, and Adam Bernison, and all the other city employees that were involved with this year's burn of our brush pile. Uh, it took a couple extra days to get it, uh, burned to where we were satisfied with it, uh, but we had a successful burn this year. I just wanted to update the council on that since I had told you that we would not burn. Uh, we were disappointed, uh, that we thought we'd lost the opportunity to do that, um, but the wind conditions were favorable enough, uh, that we contacted Fall River Health and everything worked out okay, so... Any questions for me? All right. Well, that brings us to, uh, our second executive session, so if I could get a motion to go into executive session for legal?
Make a motion, we adjourn to executive session in accordance with South Dakota codified law, one dash twenty-five dash two, three, legal.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. There'll be a short pause and there won't be any action taken after executive session. Adios amigos.
Absolutely.
Bye.